This meeting of the City of Eureka Springs City Council will come to order.
Nikki.
We would ask the folks out in the hall to kind of hold it down a little bit.
I didn't get that today yet.
We're going to try to keep this door open here so it doesn't bang in every time they come in.
Because I checked my email about 4:30, I didn't have it.
All right, clerk will call the roll, please.
Dee Perk, here. Terry McClan, here. Joyce Haller, here. David Mitchell, here. James DeVito, here. Ms. Snyder.
Okay, now this.
Okay, please stand for the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. All right, bring us to approval of the agenda and motion to discuss. So, may the floor is open. Ms. Snyder.
Is, um, Reese here yet, do you know? I know he's supposed to be coming.
He's busy with the fire, right now.
Oh, okay, well, because number three on the new businesses, discussion of the two fire stations, is dictators here, the two of them are going to present?
I don't know if he's here or not. I don't keep up with it until they show up.
Well, if the fire chief is tied up with a fire, I would say unless he comes trotting in sometime during the night, we should postpone this to the next meeting because he's the one who's got the info.
Okay.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Unless he comes in.
Why not just leave it on there and then we can postpone it at that time?
I don't care.
Okay, so you want to undo everything we just did?
Yeah.
Let's just postpone because we don't have any info and that'll give them time to give us info.
So, we're going to redo what you just undid?
We're going to postpone number three.
Okay.
Don't start with me.
Then we have, okay, we have a second and it's a done deal.
All right, just make sure. We're what, 30 seconds into the meeting?
Anybody else on agenda change?
Oh.
If nothing else on the agenda, on the favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all right. Move us on to approval of the master July 14, 2014.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Changes to deletions, corrections? If not, on the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, next will be commission committee authority reports in spire terms. First up will be planning. Ms. Melissa Green for position number five on planning has recent, or submitted another application to renew her position. You should have copies of it.
I've moved to approve Melissa Green's application.
Say you did, on the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, she's back in. All right. Um, I don't know if we have anybody here from CUPC. I didn't see anybody. Hospital, nothing. Parks, nothing. HTC. I don't believe we have anything anywhere in cemetery. I don't believe we have anybody here. So, next is going to be public comments. And let me, uh, tell everybody when we start on public comments, we're going to time you at three minutes. And at three minutes, I'm going to call you because last time we let some people go over and it turned out to be lengthy. Okay, first up is Bill King, three minutes.
Good evening, um, this is Bill King. Um, I wanted to make some comments on multi-family dwelling ordinance. I sent all the councilmen, uh, a, uh, copy of some comments that I'm not going to repeat all of those tonight, um, but I will leave a copy for the public record. I've got a couple of questions. First of all, under what authority is planning, um, making recommendations on business licenses? I can't find anywhere where that, where business licenses are under the jurisdiction of planning, so I don't know why you are getting, um, recommendations on business licenses from the planning commission. Business licenses are not in their jurisdiction and I don't see any precedent for this in the city. If the city decides that renting a business, rented property is a business, then everyone renting property should be subject to getting a license. Singling out, uh, just multifamily while leaving duplex and people who own multiple single-family homes that they rent out is discriminatory and a violation of the equal protection clause. This ordinance is really just a tax on working people. Um, and I want to know why, uh, this is a priority for the city when you should be focusing on the lack of affordable housing that we have in the city and other real priorities. Also, as I noted in my comments, um, ordinance, all ordinances coming from planning are required to first have a formal public hearing within planning. Uh, this ordinance has a new number, it's a new ordinance, there's been no public hearing on it and, um, if anything, it needs to go back to planning for a public hearing before you guys do anything on it. Um, I sent out my comments this morning and, um, was told that, um, my tirade of accusations, accusations, accusations and my paranoid rant were out of bounds, so I won't repeat them here, but they will be in the public comments. And maybe I'll get over my paranoia when someone at this table can explain a believable reason for this ordinance, uh, coming to the table, uh, rather than, um, what I'm hearing from all the city officials is that it's about, um, a way for a commissioner to get at me. Uh, thank you very much. Also, on fluoridation, please, 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 please file a lawsuit, get this thing stopped. It's, uh, it's your responsibility to protect, uh, the public. Uh, we're having something harmful added to our water and I think the only way it's going to start is if this body steps up, files a lawsuit and, um, and gets it done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. John, you're next. Three minutes.
I'm John Rankin. I'm the husband of Bill King and we own one Washington, which is a multifamily duplex or, uh, multifamily dwelling here in town. Um, I had sent, um, counsel eight questions that I emailed them, I think they got them. This is, um, this is the questions if you want to pass those along. And, oh, hang on, sorry, there's one left. And I just wanted to read them into the record if that was okay. Um, eight questions, here we go. Um, number one, Alderman DeVito and Mitchell stated they are only going by planning's criteria, but why is planning even involved? Is planning responsible for dictating who is required to obtain a business license? And is there precedence for this? Um, why is someone who owns 25 duplexes in the city, um, not considered a business yet, um, someone who owns one three-unit dwelling is? It seems a little selective to me. Uh, why can you rent out commercial buildings without a business license? Is owning one or a fleet of commercial buildings not considered a business? If all 20-plus you, multifamily dwellings currently in the city are grandfathered in and not required to follow planning's new rules even after selling, why do we, why do we even need this? Is there anything proposed in this new code that would already, uh, that's not already covered, other than raising a little bit of cash for city coffers? Wouldn't a new building of any size have to meet today's code and parking requirements? Is the city concerned about a glut of family dwellings being built here in town? And if safety is such a concern, why are single-family homes and duplexes not required to be inspected? Does council think that the lives of two people are less important than the lives of four people? Is, if, is the safety of those who live in multifamily dwellings that don't change ownership not a concern? Why is affordable housing a touted issue and concern by council but receives zero priority or attention at the table? Does council understand the fee will more than likely be tacked on to the renters, the citizens who are struggling in this economy juggling two sometimes sweet jobs at a time? It's just a money issue for the city, trying to eke out just a little more cash from its citizens. Does council realize that any profit from this will surely be eaten up by bureaucratic paperwork at city hall or in lawsuits defending this law? And eight, um, is anyone concerned that a public official has a personal vendetta against my partner and is using his position of power to get even? We have been battling this issue for more than five years and it's hard not to take it personally when you hear from your chief of police, your building inspector, a former mayor and other planning commission commissioners that Leswick has it out for you. And finally, my partner, Bill King and I are long-term residents who have invested in Eureka Springs. Let me just finish this one thing here. Um, we are here for the long haul. We, like some at this table, have taken the gamble that real estate will appreciate in this unsettling economy and invested in a multifamily dwelling 10 years ago, providing affordable housing for many along the way. This is an investment, it's not a business. Like others at this table, we are hoping to eventually pay off our mortgage and keep up with the ever-rising upkeep and a gamble for a future retirement. Nesteg, thank you very much.
Bella, you're next. Three minutes.
My name is Valerie Hubbard Damon. I love Eureka Springs. I've lived many places, but I've never felt at home until I moved here. I have never spoken before city council. Now's the time. The issue of the fluoride poisoning of our water in our beautiful town is incomprehensible. Unknown Chinese chemicals forced out our throats by global corporations and the uninformed stroke of a governor's pen? We cannot allow this to happen. Please, as people of influence, find a way to stall and stop this chemical warfare upon us and our grandchildren's future. We would be derelict in our duty now to turn a blind eye because now we are informed. Be on the right side of history and rally again to keep fluoride out of the water of Eureka Springs. Let us guard and defend the water in our springs, in our antique pipes and in our bodies. There is no doubt that good, pure water is healing water. Fluoride water is poison water. Thank you for your consideration and invaluable help in protecting Eureka Springs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kit Shepherd?
I'm Kit Shepherd and I am a mother, a grandmother and a great-grandmother. I have children, grandchildren and great-grandchildren who live here and I do not want them poisoned. I do not want anyone's children poisoned and the fluoride that they're putting in the water, I've seen movies of it, I've, I've listened to scientists all over the world talk about the kind of fluoride that they're putting in the water. It's been happening since the 1950s. This fluoride is a byproduct of, um, chemical fertilizers and it's burned and it's, and it's filled, um, mixed with water, put in tankers and sold to people. The EPA say that they can't do anything about it because once it is sold, it becomes a product and it has nothing to do with their jurisdiction from that point on. Well, they bring it out here and people have to wear a mask, they have to be totally protected to even handle it, to put it in the water and then they expect us to drink it. Even bathing in it can be just as detrimental as drinking it. So, you could have a water filter so you don't drink it, but if you're going to take a bath in it, you're going to get it in your system. It is a neurotoxin and they've proven this all over. The head, um, or one of the head scientists of the EPA, who is a former EPA scientist, has said that this stuff is totally a neurotoxin. There are children whose IQs are going down every year and their, um, what happens is that their pineal gland will get calcified and they cannot think straight. And, uh, more and more children are losing their, their intelligence simply from this, this toxin. It's all over the country, it's all over the world in different places. Other countries have banned it now and this country needs to ban it too. But our state has mandated that it will be put in our water. And I totally believe that the reason this is happening is, uh, because of a big business called Delta Diesel, which wants this fluoride put in our water. And I believe that they have purchased the stuff, that's why the state wants it in the water, or that's why they have tried to get it in the water. Because I, and I think that they're getting a kickback on it. I think the dentists that have worked here at this place have, have done the same thing and I think it's nothing but somebody wanting money. And it's, to me, it's, it's at the expense of our children and us, all of us. I don't want my pineal gland getting calcified either. I don't want yours, that happening to you or anyone else. And I certainly don't want the generations after us to suffer for something that we have done wrong. If there's anything that you can do to help with this, we all will appreciate it. And, um, I think it can be stopped and it needs to be stopped. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Perfect time. Eric Schuneman.
Yes, sir, thank you. City council, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your attention. After finding out that this was on the agenda again, uh, that you're going to be working on a resolution against the fluoride issue, I came up with a sample resolution for y'all's consideration. City of Eureka Springs, a resolution calling for the Arkansas Attorney General to begin the process to remove and prosecute the governor and the members of the state legislature for treason and attempted genocide in their overturning of our two elections not to fluoridate. Whereas sodium fluoride is an EPA-regulated rat poison banned in many countries, including Nor- Norway, Germany, Denmark, Switzerland, China and Japan. Whereas the citizens of the Caribou Water District have twice elected not to fluoridate our municipal water supply. Whereas Black's Law Dictionary defines an election as, quote, "indicating the political will of the citizenry," end quote. Whereas Webster's Dictionary defines a republic as, quote, "a government where the citizens have the supreme authority and are entitled," excuse me, "are entitled to vote elected officers and representatives who are governing according to law," end quote. Whereas Webster's Dictionary defines dictatorship as, quote, "a government where absolute control is held by leadership," end quote. Whereas Webster's Dictionary defines treason as, quote, "the offensive attempting by overt acts to overthrow the government of the state to which one owes allegiance or to kill or injure the sovereign or his family," end quote. Whereas Webster's Dictionary defines genocide as, quote, "the deliberate and systematic destruction of a racial, political or cultural group," end quote. Whereas the governor and state legislature do not have the authority to overturn a citizen election, but are obligated by law to follow the will of the citizens as indicated by their election. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to inform and compel the Arkansas Attorney General's office by writ of mandamus, their obligation to prosecute the governor and state legislature for treason and attempted genocide for their twice overturning our elections not to fluoridate. Thank you all very much for your consideration here. We, we must recognize what this actually is and I believe this puts it forth straightforward here, just simply by the definitions. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Cheryl Willis.
Cheryl Willis, um, I'm here for two reasons. One, I do want to say, as you already know, but I have to make my own personal statement. This is coming from me as a citizen. Um, I, again, beg you to not close Rock Street and think about all those people that showed up, over 50 people last week that, um, and we've, I wanted to let you know that we already have offers of easements for property for the trails, yay, um, across private property and, uh, we already have momentum going since you passed it. I want to thank you very much for passing the, um, trails plan last week, uh, or two weeks ago. I'm also here about the fluoride. Um, I want you to understand, maybe, maybe some of you don't, that there's at least two different kinds of fluoride. And one of them that is naturally occurring and some people do have it naturally in their wells, but it's a completely different thing than what we're talking about the state mandating. The chemicals out there, I, I was a scientist, I've taken organic chem and biochem and all those things. What they're talking about putting in our water is a poison and you have to have special filters to get it out of your water. It's not going to get out of our water when it goes to the wastewater treatment plant either and it's going to stay in the environment. And they're very toxic chemicals and if you think about having two things of, uh, you know, a cup of water here and this toxic thing that has crossbone and skulls on it and you pour it in here and then you, you're going to drink it? It's no different. It's, it's rat poison, it's, it's terrible for us. Um, again, you know that I have, uh, uh, physical ailments, uh, I take up some salt baths to help with some of my things that goes through the skin. Even gluten goes through the skin. People can't have that in their house, they can't use the same pots for things like that. No different with fluoride. When you drink it, it's not just us drinking it out of the tap, anybody that's cooking adds it to that. Pop is made with it, so if the state's mandating it, it's in our pop. It's in anything that is manufactured with water that's been fluoridated. So, it gets more and more concentrated. If you put it in your tea kettle, it gets more and more concentrated and we're putting this in our bodies. Two things. One is, um, I, I don't take medications that the doctors want because I choose not to be medicated. I don't put things in my body, they're poisonous. They're deliberately putting poisons and, or medication, however you want to look at it, both of those are illegal. They can't force medicate and they can't poison us. All we have to do is say no and just don't do it and see what happens. I'm willing to suffer the consequences of that, how about you? Do you want your grandchildren, your babies putting it in their bottles? Do you want your grandchildren, your little babies, um, damaged by this? It will damage them. Like she said, the pineal gland, bad stuff. It's, it can cause sleep ap- I'm not sleep apnea, but sleep disturbances because the pineal gland produces melatonin in the body. If you've heard of that, you know, the melatonin's help us sleep. Thank you very much. Please do whatever you can to stop it. Thanks for the trails.
Bob Howell. It's Bob.
Uh, let's get back to the multifamily issue. Uh, I'm Bob Howell, I have two multifamily properties, uh, a three-plex on Spring and a four-plex on King's Highway. Reading over the proposed ordinance, uh, this, this does nothing for me as a landlord. It does nothing for my tenants. Nothing. What we're looking at is the city going after people that have multifamily complexes that are trying to provide a service for citizens of Eureka Springs and trying to extort some money out of us, plain and simple. It's extortion. You know, you're not providing any services and, uh, you have no requirements for the business license. So, really, it should be considered a tax and under Arkansas law, you cannot tax rental property. Uh, I'm wondering why single-family and duplexes aren't covered in this? Why are we being selective again and just going after multifamily people? Believe me, I ain't, I ain't getting rich off of this. I just spent $700 on a water heater. Who can believe that it costs that much? Uh, the way your ordinance is proposed now with the, uh, parking lot requirements, it's going to take a lot more real estate. It's going to discourage any future new construction and multifamily coming into the city and it's also going to discourage, uh, conversion to multifamily where that might be appropriate. So, I'm asking you, don't vote for this multifamily ordinance, just where you can go out and say, "Well, we did something." You know, admit that it doesn't do anything and throw it back to planning. I was never called to a planning meeting to, uh, voice my concerns or opinions and I don't, I don't think the stakeholders are on board in this. It either needs to go back to planning or just be dropped, please. And about this fluoride thing, that's silly, keep it out of here.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Don Gudoe.
Hello, I'm Don Gudoe, I live in Eureka Springs. Uh, it's, I'm here about the fluoride issue. I consulted a nutritionist because I didn't know that much about it. She recommended I read a letter, a paper by Dr. Joseph Mercola, holistic MD. And, uh, he, everything that's on this paper has been said prior to my coming up here, so I will not repeat everything that has been said. But I think the gist of the paper is that the, um, a study was done in September of 2001 by the International Journal of Pediatric Dentistry in South Africa and they found that children who drank water containing high levels of natural fluoride had more tooth decay. And, uh, fluoride saturated American teenagers had twice the rate of cavities as the South African children. So, it kind of makes sense that, uh, the dental clinics want the fluoride back so that they can get the patients back. And, uh, this paper should be read by everybody. It is very good. You can go online, www.mercola.com. Very, very interesting paper and thank you for listening to me.
Thanks, sir. Jim Morris. Jim, you're next.
Hi, my name is Jim Morris, I live on Wall Street, Eureka Springs. I'm here to speak in opposition to the fluoride going into our water. First of all, we don't know where the fluoride comes from, you cannot find out the source, who it was purchased from, how their plants operate, it's not something that is available to us. Some of you have traveled a lot, I've traveled quite a bit. I remember being in Pompeii and seeing how they thought it was wonderful to have indoor plumbing in their houses centuries ago, but it was with lead pipe. Look what lead did to, uh, to, to that, did to that community, excuse me, and what it's done since then. What, what else, we going to look down the road to something else that goes into our water that we don't know anything about? Someday as they tour Eureka Springs and see all of these houses empty and say, "Well, these people died from fluoride poisoning," you know? Well, that's a little far-fetched, I think, but still, at what point do we stop? Where do we go? Let's really do the research. The research shows possibly water in fluoride might help infants up to about two years old. There is no definite absolute research that there is any benefit from fluoride going into water for anything in adults. In fact, it can cause a lot of problems with softening of the bones in older people. I just ask that you really consider this, consider filing a lawsuit against the state to get this thing stopped before it becomes an epidemic. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Melissa Green.
Hi, Melissa Green, 17, Bridge Street. When I was growing up, I was always taught if it's broke, if it's not broke, don't fix it. Now, when I watch TV commercials or ads in a paper, you hear about side effects. It says may cause vomiting, may cause shortness of breath, may do something that lasts four hours. So, basically, they're warning you, they're giving you a choice to decide. What I would like to ask humbly is, please, let's send this to the vote of the people, let the people decide on this fluoride because I think it's a big issue and I think there's a lot of feeling for it. So, let's let our citizens decide. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Three minutes. How you doing, sir?
Thank you, good. Thank you for your time. Um, a lot of points have been made and I would like to approach it from the angle of business. Eureka is founded on health and recreation. I believe our demographic includes people with higher discretionary income, a higher level of education. I believe that these people are going to be critical in looking at the decision that we make regarding our move towards health, including our water. I worked in the restaurant business for many years when I first came here in the early 90s and it taught me a lot. I think that this is our target and this is part of what Eureka's about. It's what makes us special compared to so much of Arkansas. It's something to protect. When most of the world is moving towards progressive moods, ourselves included, and the world is demanding that more and more of us each day, that we make the right decision, I think it's time to make the right decision with this, not to go backwards. And I don't know why they feel that they can do it to us, maybe because we're laid-back Arkansans, I don't know. But this would never fly in California or New York and I don't want it to happen here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Gentman Stanley.
Thank you all for, for listening to all of us. Um, you've heard so much about the no fluoride, which is what I'm talking about. You've heard so much about the no fluoride, which is what I'm talking about. I think it's wonderful that so much research has been done and that y'all have been reading this research. And I just appreciate everyone at this table listening to this. I know this issue's come again and again, and I think this really is the time to stop it. I think the resolution that's been drafted is fantastic. I really, really hope that you all will support it. I've lived here for, I think, 30 years now. I love this town. It's in my heart. I do not want to drink fluoride, and I do not want to be made to ingest something that I don't want to ingest. And I really, really appreciate all of your time, all of your efforts. And I'm really here to thank you for listening to this and for voting no on fluoride in our water. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jill Slane. Natalie, you're next. Natalie Mannering.
Hi, Natalie Mannering. I've lived here for seven years. I think everyone here is really pretty much in agreement about the fluoride issue, and we all know that it's bad for us and we don't want it. But what we really have to look at now is, what strategies do we use to fight this at a state level? Because it's tricky, and we can't just say, "Well, it's bad and we don't want it," and point to all the facts, because we're dealing with a Department of Public Health, and we're not allowed to contradict them because it's assumed that if they approved it, then it's fine. So we have to find other loopholes. And this is something that everybody really needs to be aware of. I think Mickey Schneider is learning about some of those loopholes, so I hope that we will follow in her lead. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Pat Matsukis. And then, Ms. Donahue, you're last. Pat, okay, however y'all want to do it. Y'all are the last two.
My name is Donna Hershey. I appeared before the city council a while ago with a parking garage for motorcycles. It's going to be right underneath my bedroom window. I appeared here before about the parking garage for motorcycles. The motorcycle garage has been turned down twice by the Planning Commission, twice in the last couple of years. The city council ignored this fact and without consulting the neighborhood, after eight of us have spoken out against it, the Basin Park Hotel made no attempt to consult the neighbors to try to have a dialogue about this important matter. No attempts were made by the city council to protect the neighborhood against the devaluation of our property and the awful noise level, which will only be worsened by this garage. Very disappointed in the city council.
Thanks, ma'am. Pat Matsukis.
Pat Matsukis, Five Mountain. When I'm looking at the agenda, I'm saying that if the Parks Commission can't figure out how to get around the Bricks's property for their Parks Trail, then they should absolutely resign and figure out a new way to exist. For two years, that woman has been in front of this council with absolute begging and respect to this council to get this happening so that everybody would be okay. And maybe tonight it'll be okay, maybe it won't. But I find it incredibly interesting that's been going on for two years, and she's been suffering at the hands of several councils now, and it's not right. No one in town should be treated this way. I don't care who you are. It's very not nice. When I'm looking at the fluoride, of course, I stand against it, and I also think that within our own city, we have the ability to fund this from the mayor's fund, from Public Works, especially in the water fund, because we know about our bad pipes. There is money there for the city to hire an attorney who specializes in this kind of thing, and I wish we would go forward with it. And you can hire an attorney and put it on the ballot for November. I think time is of the essence here, so I don't want it to go to a ballot just because I think we don't have that kind of time at this moment. But I certainly want to encourage us to find the right attorney to make this happen. Getting on to the yard waste, I hope that thing gets resolved soon. There's a ton of bamboo in my neighborhood that was never planted by me, nor approved by me, nor asked of me, and yet it's all there. It's all over the streets on Mountain. It's all over Main Street there. It goes up Mountain, and you can't get rid of it. Once you pull it out of the ground, either somebody has to take it and use it, but you can't compost it, you can't put it in the chipper. We have it. Something needs to happen here. It's all over the place, and tourists are in it. The bamboo, just so you know, also helps propagate ticks to an incredible level. It has been awful for the last five years in my neighborhood, just around my house, because the bamboo just creates ticks. The last thing I want to say is about this, like Donna, my neighbor, who was here before me, we have all, there are some of us that have signs in our yard. And if you don't know what the sign says, I'll tell you. It says, "It is unfortunate that the Basin Park Hotel is an inconsiderate neighbor." But along with that, if I'd had enough room, I would have put City Council, too, because y'all were missing your job not to even talk to planning to find out why they turned this down. I have just spent, in the last 10 years, probably another $25,000 in dollars, probably between layering on, we've put in tons of labor on my house. And I'm damned if I'm going to see it go down in value because there's going to be motorcycles down there. Yes, there's only going to be 10 right now. I guarantee you, by booze, bikes, and barbecue in September, that whole parking lot down there will become a big rev center. And I don't think that's the image we want to give to Eureka. I am happy to have a motorcycle garage on top of the hill where it belongs, and most motorcyclists, A, want to be by their bikes. I don't know why they'd even want to park down there. But if they did, you're causing a big parking jam-up that nobody even talked about. So not only am I losing my value on my property, all my neighbors are losing their value. And the only one to gain, which is not what C1 says, but the only one to gain is the hotel, not all of us. And that's what C1 says. It should be good for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That'll conclude public comments. Unless somebody else came in, we don't know about. If not, we'll move on with the city business. Move to unfinished business. Number one is discussion of unnamed street, Rock Street, surveying new ordinance. Wanting to discuss something? Second? Mr. DeVito.
For the city attorney, I'm guessing at this point, the veto is a moot point, and we're on to, have you seen this document?
I've seen, which document?
The new proposed ordinance.
The proposed ordinance I have seen.
At this point, you still have technically the veto before you, but you also have this ordinance and you have the ability to sidestep at the moment the veto and see whether this ordinance flies with the rest of council and whether that would then moot the need for an override or not.
Mr. Mayor? Might I ask Rachel Brick to the microphone, please?
Ms. Brick. Valerie, do you need to come over and sit down? Let's get Buddy situated here. All right, go ahead, Rachel.
Have you read this document?
Yes, sir.
Are you, your attorney and the other attorneys and the other parties involved in compliance with this document?
As far as I know, yes.
As far as you know?
As of like, right before the council meeting, yes.
So if we were to pass this tonight, this would be okay with you?
Yes.
Might I ask Mr. Bland to the microphone, please? Mr. Williams to the microphone, please? Mr. Williams, are you and your parties aware of this document?
As of about 30 seconds ago, I thought we were. I'm now informed you hadn't read it. But no, I think that document that you have before you, I believe is the last version that I sent. It's gone back and forth a dozen times, perhaps, and that is the final version that we've come to. And with the exception of, the only proofing of the legals has been my doing it by hand. I believe that document's ready to go, and my client is in agreement with it.
At this time, I'll make a motion to assign this ordinance a number and place it for its first reading.
Second.
You going to do all these by roll call to exist in new ordinance?
Wouldn't hurt.
Stand by for roll call, though.
Be 22.
There'd be a new ordinance number.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Rachel Snyder?
No.
Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Nope.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Kirk?
Yes.
The new ordinance number will be 2215. An ordinance vacating an unnamed, unopened street located between blocks 1 and 2 of the magnetic bay survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas, receiving and granting utility easements and for other purposes. Whereas the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, has reviewed petition of Ryan and Rachel Brick's to vacate certain real property within the city pursuant to Arkansas Code Antnotated Section 1454-104 et cetera. And whereas on May 12, 2014, the city of Eureka Springs reclaimed said area from the Parks and Recreation Department. And whereas the above described area is no longer needed for corporate purposes of ingress and egress and has not been utilized as a street or alley for a period in excess of five years prior to the filing of the petition to vacate. And a proper petition to vacate has been filed, notice provided as required by law, and is before the city council. And whereas Ryan and Rachel Brick's are the owners of lots 1, 2, and 3, block 2, and part of lot 15, all of lots 16, 17, 18, and part of lot 19, and block 1, magnetic bay survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, together with other lands. And the petitioners are desirous of having the unnamed road, which is situated between block 1 and block 2 of magnetic bay survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and which constitutes an extension of Rock Street hereinafter referred to as unnamed street. Vacated and whereas the Mildred Sea Ames Estate is the owner of part of lot 15, block 1, magnetic bay survey of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, together with other lands, and has consented to the vacating of said unnamed road. And whereas Marble Flats LLC is the owner of certain lands, including block 9 of the Clayton survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, which lands are adjacent to and accessible by the aforementioned unnamed road. Whereas Marble Flats LLC has previously objected to the closure and vacating of said unnamed street by the city of Eureka Springs, is willing and does hereby consent to such closure and vacation pursuant to the conditions and agreements set forth herein. And whereas the city of Eureka Springs, the petitioners, and Marble Flats have reached a compromise agreement, which will allow the unnamed road to be vacated and closed, and which agreement is in the best interest of the city of Eureka Springs, the petitioner, and Marble Flats LLC. And whereas Ryan and Rachel Brick's have executed and delivered unto the city of Eureka Springs, conditioned upon the passage hereof, an easement conveying unto the city of Eureka Springs and its assigns, an easement for underground utilities on the following described property to wit. A utility easement being 30 feet wide for construction purposes and permanently 20 feet wide across a part of an unnamed road, being an extension of Rock Street in magnetic bay survey hereinafter referred to as unnamed road, being more particularly described as follows, commencing at the southwest corner of block 1 of said magnetic bay survey, said point being on the east line of said unnamed road, and the point of beginning thence south 88 degrees, 31 minutes, 38...
Seconds.
Minutes?
Seconds.
Degrees, right. Thank you. Seconds west, 30.85 feet to a point on the west line of said road, thence along said west line, the following courses, north 11 degrees, 25 minutes, 25 seconds west, 147.57 feet, thence north 12 degrees, 49 minutes, 13 degrees east, 46.77 feet, thence north 32 degrees, 25 minutes, 39 seconds east, 36.11 feet, thence north 15 degrees, 3 minutes, 52 seconds west, 15 feet, thence leaving said west line, south 66 degrees, 43 minutes, 3 seconds east, 49 feet to a point on the east side of said unnamed road, thence along said east line to the following courses, south 49 degrees, 56 degrees, 49 degrees, 56 minutes, 7 seconds west, 6 feet, then south 42 degrees, 47 minutes, 18 seconds west, 39.37 feet, then south 12 degrees, 49 minutes, 13 seconds west, 38.87 feet, then south 11 degrees, 25 minutes, 25 seconds east, 147.31 feet to the point of beginning. Whereas the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, for the express purpose of obtaining the consent of Marble Flats LLC to the vacation of unnamed road, does hereby grant simultaneous with the passage hereof, an easement for the installation and maintenance of underground utilities unto Marble Flats LLC and its successors, and assigns forever on the following described property to wit. A utility easement being 30 feet wide for construction purposes and permanently 20 feet wide across a portion of magnetic bay survey and a portion of Clayton survey, all in the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, and being more particularly described as follows, commencing on the southwest corner of block 1 of said magnetic bay survey, said point of beginning on the east side of Rock Street as plotted, and the point of beginning thence south 24 degrees, 49 minutes, 52 seconds east, 17.81 feet to a point on said east line, thence along said east line, south 5 degrees, 45 minutes, 51 seconds west, 44 feet, then south 89 degrees, 13 minutes, 4 seconds west, 30.20 feet to a point on the west side of said Rock Street, thence along said west line, the following courses, north 5 degrees, 45 minutes, 50 seconds east, 42.54 feet, thence north 24 degrees, 29, 49 minutes, 53 seconds west, 18.99 feet, thence north 11 degrees, 25 minutes, 25 seconds west, 147.57 feet, thence north 12 degrees, 49 minutes, 13 seconds east, 46.77 feet, thence north 32 degrees, 25 minutes, 39 seconds east, 36.11 feet, thence north 15 degrees, 3 seconds, 53 minutes, 52 seconds west, 27.07 feet to a point in magnetic street, said point being 15 feet south of the center line of said street, thence running parallel with the center line of said street, south 82 degrees, 17 minutes, 19 seconds west, 2.19 feet, then south 80 degrees, 6 minutes, 38 seconds west, 149.78 feet, then south 83 degrees, 43 minutes, 20 seconds west, 20 seconds west, 56.73 feet to the center line of Arkansas Highway 23, Main Street, thence along said highway, north 5 degrees, 2 minutes, 36 seconds west, 18.71 feet, thence north 8 degrees, 30 minutes, 18 seconds west, 11.31 feet, thence along magnetic street being 15 feet north of the center line, north 83 degrees, 43 minutes, 20 seconds east, 55.82 feet, thence north 80 degrees, 6 minutes, 38 seconds east, 149.40 feet, thence north 82 degrees, 17 minutes, 14 seconds east, 29.14 feet, thence leaving said magnetic street, south 15 degrees, 3 minutes, 52 seconds east, 64.52 feet, then south 32 degrees... seconds east, sixty-four-point-five-two feet, then south thirty-two degrees twenty-five minutes forty seconds west, forty-one-point-one-six feet, to a point on the east side of said Rock Street, thence along said east line to the following courses: south twelve degrees forty-nine minutes thirteen seconds west, thirty-eight-point-eight-seven feet, then south eleven degrees twenty-five minutes twenty-five seconds east, one hundred and forty-seven-point-three-one feet, to the point of beginning. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the city of Eureka Springs hereby releases, vacates, and abandons all its rights, together with the rights of the public generally in and to the street designated as follows, and title is vested in the adjoining landowners each to the center of the street so abandoned, and ownership shall be free from the easement of the city for public use as a street. The portion of the street being vacated is described as follows. Is this cruel and unusual punishment?
Yeah.
Oh, Gulf burden. A utility easement being thirty feet wide for construction purposes and permanently twenty feet wide across a part of an unnamed road being an extension of Rock Street in Magnetic Bay Survey hereinafter referred to as an unnamed road, being more particularly described as follows: commencing at the southwest corner of block one of said Magnetic Bay Survey, said point being on the east line of said unnamed road, and the point of beginning thence south eighty-eight degrees thirty-one minutes thirty-eight seconds west, thirty-point-eight-five feet, to a point on the west line of said road, thence along said west line, in the following courses: north eleven degrees twenty-five minutes twenty-five seconds west, one hundred forty-seven-point-five-seven feet, thence north twelve degrees forty-nine minutes thirteen seconds east, forty-six-point-seven-seven feet, thence north thirty-two degrees twenty-five minutes thirty-nine seconds east, thirty-six-point-eleven feet, thence north fifteen degrees three minutes fifty-two seconds west, fifteen feet, thence leaving said west line, south sixty-six degrees forty-three minutes three seconds east, forty-nine feet, to a point on the east line of said unnamed road, thence along said east line, the following courses: south forty-nine degrees fifty-six minutes seven seconds west, six feet, then south forty-two degrees forty-seven minutes eighteen seconds west, thirty-nine-point-three-seven feet, then south twelve degrees forty-nine minutes thirteen seconds west, thirty-eight-point-eight-seven feet, then south eleven degrees twenty-five minutes twenty-five seconds east, one hundred forty-seven-point-three-one feet, to the point of beginning. The city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, acting by and through its mayor, has or shall simultaneously herewith execute and deliver unto Marble Flats LLC an easement for underground utilities on the following described real property to wit. Your Honor.
A utility easement being thirty feet wide for construction purposes and permanently twenty feet wide across a portion of Magnetic Bay Survey and across a portion of Clayton Survey, all in the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, being more particularly described as follows: commencing at the southwest corner of block one of said Magnetic Bay Survey, said point being on the least, at the east line of Rock Street as platted, and the point of beginning thence south twenty-four degrees forty-nine minutes fifty-two seconds east to seventeen-point-eight-one feet, to a point of said east line, thence along said east line, south five degrees forty-five minutes fifty-one seconds west, forty-four feet, then south eighty-nine degrees thirteen minutes four seconds west, thirty-point-twenty feet to a point on the west line of said Rock Street, thence along said west line, the following courses: north five degrees forty-five second, forty, I'm sorry, forty-five minutes fifty seconds east, forty-two-point-five-four feet, thence north twenty-four degrees forty-nine minutes fifty-three seconds west, eighteen-point-nine-nine feet, then north eleven degrees twenty-five minutes twenty-five seconds west, one hundred forty-seven-point-five-seven feet, thence north twelve degrees forty-nine feet, excuse me, thirteen seconds east, forty-six-point-seven-seven feet, thence north thirty-two degrees twenty-five minutes thirty-nine seconds east, thirty-six-point-eleven feet, thence north fifteen degrees three minutes fifty-two seconds west, twenty-seven-point-seven feet, to a point in Magnetic Street, said point being fifteen feet south of the center line of said street, thence running parallel with the center line of said street, south eighty-two degrees seventeen minutes nineteen seconds west, two-point-nine feet, then south eighty degrees six minutes thirty-eight seconds west, one hundred forty-nine-point-seventy-eight feet, then south eighty-three degrees forty-three minutes twenty seconds west, fifty-six-point-seventy-three feet, to the center line of Arkansas Highway, Main Street, I'm saying, Arkansas Highway 23, Main Street, thence along said highway, north five degrees two minutes thirty-six seconds west, eighteen-point-seventy-one feet, thence north eight degrees thirty minutes eighteen seconds west, eleven-point-three-one feet, thence along Magnetic Street, being fifteen feet north of the center line, north eighty degrees forty-three minutes twenty seconds east, fifty-five-point-eight-two feet, thence north eighty degrees sixteen minutes thirty-eight seconds east, one hundred forty-nine-point-forty feet, thence north eighty-two degrees seventy minutes fourteen seconds east, twenty-nine-point-fourteen feet, then leaving said Magnetic Street, south fifteen degrees three minutes fifty-two seconds east, sixty-four-point-five-two feet, then south thirty-two degrees twenty-five minutes forty seconds west, forty-one-point-sixteen feet, to a point on the east line of said Rock Street, thence along said east line, in the following courses: south twelve degrees forty-nine minutes thirteen seconds west, thirty-eight-point-eight-seven feet, thence south eleven degrees twenty-five minutes twenty-five seconds east, one hundred forty-seven-point-three-one feet, to the point of the beginning. It being the expressed intent of the city of Eureka Springs to grant unto Marble Flats LLC an easement sufficient to allow the installation of water, sewer, and all utility, all other utilities from the vacated unnamed road to a point of connection with present, with presently existing utilities. Number three, any utilities constructed, installed in above name, I'm sorry, above described easement shall be installed underground and in full and complete, and in full and complete accordance, it's supposed to be a D, with all such building codes and regulations as shall be enforced and applicable at the time of installation or construction. Number four, the easement conveyed to Marble Flats LLC shall be for utility purposes only, shall be limited to the installation, construction, or maintenance of utilities, all of which shall be installed on the ground and for no other purpose. Number five, a copy of this ordinance duly certified by the city clerk shall be filed in the office of the recorder in and for the Western District, Carroll County, Arkansas, and recorded in the deeds records of the county, signatures on the following page. The end.
Page to approve ordinance number two-two-one-five on its first reading.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. McClung.
Page three. Under number one, the legal description's not correct, I don't believe. And that we're, you're recommending to vacate the street, and you refer it as a utility easement. It's the same legal that's on the front that the Bricks did, and it's, it's not the same purpose. Page three. The legal description under number one, a portion of the street being vacated is described as follows: a utility easement being thirty feet wide for construction purposes and permanently twenty feet wide, that's not correct. That's a street, you're doing an old street. The meets and bounds may be correct, but the wording is not.
What would you recommend?
Fixing it.
To say what?
Why would you want to leave it incorrect?
Change it to what, Terry?
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not following you, I, I need it explained.
What wording do we need?
Pardon me?
What wording do we need instead of?
That was, whatever was used before, exactly how it was done, I don't remember, but I was looking at, looking it up a second ago, but it's just deed and street, he knows.
Do you want the old one?
Just, just scratch the first, let's see. Yeah, there you go, right there.
Could Mr. Williams come for the microphone, please, help us out?
Terry.
He's right, taking that first part of it out.
Yes, sir. Oh, I've.
Yeah, you made a comment about striking the first line.
I think that, I think that the issue that has been raised can actually be corrected by just striking the first line and capitalizing the A, where it begins then a part of an unnamed road being an extension of Rock Street in Magnetic Bay Survey.
You're suggesting to start it here?
Yes.
So you're talking about literally taking out the first printed?
It just happens to work out that it's the entire first line, yes. But you're, you're correct that that as written is not correct. And I, again, I apologize, I've been working on this today, and we got, I got the legal description sometime this afternoon, early this afternoon.
So both locations?
No.
The, the first location, what Mr. and Ms. Bricks are deeding to the city is an easement. But what the city is vacating is a street. The description can be the same, though, as far as the meets and bounds.
Yes.
I would suggest we go ahead and pass this on its first reading and amend it prior to the second reading.
Well, could we amend it now?
Why can't we just amend it now?
Well, because we have a motion on the table to approve it on its first reading.
Okay. Mr. Perkman.
Yeah, just a little discussion there on the third page. This description of the property, now, because it's a little hard to follow this, and we don't have a map or anything to kind of follow what the layout was laid out, it appears to me that we're, we're granting an easement down to the center line of Arkansas Highway 23. Is that, is that correct? Is that what you, how you read that?
Yeah.
From, Mr. Williams, could you come up here and maybe, just give us a short little discussion of it?
Actually, I have a small visual that I guess can be passed around. This is not, I'm, don't try and take any measurements off of here because it would not be accurate, but it gives you an idea of what is being done. This is somewhat of a representation of the easement that the city would be granting to Marble Flats. Essentially.
Oh, I didn't realize.
Essentially, if you, if you look at this area right here, this bottom portion, what would be, I guess, the southern portion is in Rock Street, and that's, that's outside of Mr. and Ms. Bricks' property. Then beginning at approximately, it's hard to read that, but you can see where it says P O B, beginning at that point, and coming up to, close to Magnetic is the portion that is being, actually being vacated by Mr. and Ms. Bricks. And then from that point out into Magnetic is the portion that then the city would be granting to allow connection to all utilities. So yes, it does go out to Highway 23, because we, we came to the conclusion, we didn't really know exactly where things needed to go to, and that was what was worked out.
Did, can I follow up something? Did, did you have discussions with our Public Works Director and, and of course, our legal counsel?
Spoke with city attorney, and that's, that's my understanding that that was something that would work for everybody.
Did you talk with Public Works Director?
We had him come out several times and, and never could really get exactly what we needed from the standpoint of a connection point. And his, his issue was, without actual specific plans, he couldn't really tell us where we would, exactly where we'd have to connect.
But did he say, hey, this would be fine to have this easement down Magnetic to the center of 23?
He did not use those words, no, sir. And I relied on the city attorney with regard to.
It is my understanding from discussions I had with the Public Works that some connections could possibly be made where they enter Magnetic, but that's a smaller line, that the city's main lines are down here, and the only way to get to them is to run down our lines that are not necessarily large enough right now, and those run down, as I understand from Public Works, the, through Magnetic.
Yeah.
So we, we, we would just follow to upgrade those if we, if they're not.
We actually included, if you noticed, some kind of wiggly language at the end that, about what the intention is, to allow for a connection to existing utilities.
That, that was the idea, if the lines were to be discovered to be sufficient there in Magnetic, simply connect on there. If not, bring them down into sufficient size on into the main lines that are on down there in Main Street or Highway 23, whatever you want to call it. And as I understand, we already have lines that run in that approximate location all the way into Main, and so we would be following what we have already provided by the state once we enter Highway 23. Still, we'd need their approval to do it, but we're not, we're not getting on to more land of theirs or anything, as far as I can tell.
That addresses one of the sticking points in getting this whole thing approved, has been access for Marble Flats to tie in, because the Bricks' property stopped short of that, so we needed this in order to complete the ability to grant an easement, otherwise easement would go nowhere.
Mr. McClung, do you have a question?
No, Mr. Williams, sorry, thank you.
I have one more.
Yes.
Ms. Bricks, could I have you step forward? Don't need to belabor the issue, I just want to make sure everybody's on board. Are you satisfied with this ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. So once it becomes law, then everybody will be happy campers?
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
I know we'll never cross this table again.
Question for the city attorney, even though we have a motion to approve on its first reading, can we go ahead and amend it prior to the first reading? I mean, prior to approval of the first reading?
Uh, yes, you could.
Okay, I'll make an amendment to strike the line, a utility easement being thirty feet wide for construction purposes and permanently twenty feet wide across from the description on point one on page three.
I'll second that.
You should basically take out that first line.
That's basically what I said, yes.
So it starts at a part of?
Correct.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion on? Okay, this will be on the amendment of the paragraphs on page two and three, is that correct?
Uh, actually, it's on page three.
Under one.
It's on page three.
Under item one, the first line of the description.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Nope.
Four-two?
Four-two.
Okay, brings us back to the motion to approve on first read. Does that need to be a real call?
It wouldn't hurt, it doesn't have to.
We'll just do a real call.
And this is on the motion to approve the first reading?
On the first read, yes.
Ms. Snyder?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Nope.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkman?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Four-two.
Okay, Mr. DeVito.
Move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number two-two-one-five on its second reading by title only, you can thank me for that, Ann.
Second. Thank you, James.
Stand by, we'll just do them all.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
No.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkman?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Nope.
Four-two. Ordinance number two-two-one-five, an ordinance vacating an unnamed, unopened street located between blocks one and two of the Magnetic Bay Survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas, receiving and granting utility easements and for other purposes.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number two-two-one-five on its second reading.
Second.
Stand by. Mr. McClung, sorry.
I just want to state last time, one last time, that I don't believe that the, the Eureka Springs City Council has the power or the right to, to a, to vacate a, a street that. to, to a, to vacate a, a street that, that serves people, property owners, down the line. It's, it's not, it's not an end of the line property. So, you know, I don't, I don't think we, we should be doing this. I just wanted to state that. I haven't, I've felt this way all along, and, and I firmly believe that, that it's correct, that we don't have the power to do so. So.
Any further?
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkball?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
No.
Mr. McClung?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
Oh, yes.
Four, two.
Mr. McClung, Mr. DeVito, sorry.
Move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2215 on its third and final reading by title only.
Second.
Stand by.
Mr. McClung?
Nope.
Mr. Perkball?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Nope.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Four, two. Ordinance number 2215, an ordinance vacating an unnamed unopened street located between blocks one and two of the Magnetic Base Survey to the city of Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas, receiving and granting utility easements and for other purposes.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2215 on its third reading.
Second.
Stand by.
Mr. Perkball?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
No.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Nope.
Four, two.
How's that, how's that, how's that?
We done?
All right, moving on.
Moving right along.
Yes, please. Ms. Bricks has some signal, quick.
You changed your mind.
On behalf of my husband and I, I just want to thank you folks for sticking this out with us, and thank you for everything, all of you, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Moves us on to number two, which would be a discussion and ordinance for easement, I'm sorry. Yes, ordinance for, well, number one and number two took care of itself.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, all inclusive.
We're down to fluoride.
A question for the attorney. We just do nothing and by leaving it table, the veto, it just dies now, right? Do we have to do anything to get rid of it?
I think the best thing to do would actually to be make a motion that, to withdraw the original motion to override some of-
Second.
And then have a vote.
Thank you.
Any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Moves us on to number three, which would be a resolution concerning fluoride.
Move to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open? Ms. Snyder?
Okay, I've been doing a lot of work on this. Got a lot more work to go, but for right now, the resolution I have come up with to send to Carol Boone is, I think you should all have a copy. It's the short version, not the longer version. I've been advised a standalone resolution rather in addition to the one from two years ago will be more appropriate and effective. So, we need a resolution number approval and reading of that in regards to the resolution that Eric Schunerman gave us tonight. This is really intriguing. But Eric, I do want to check into this. I like a lot of this, but then again, I'm a radical. I will look into this, I will get some consultation done on it. This is not a dead issue. Reading the resolution is merely a first step towards hopefully delaying for at least another five months, at which time we will hopefully be prepared to go to the legislature and kick some fanny. So, right now, what I would like is to have the city council pass approval on numbering and reading this resolution and then appropriately and properly sending it on to the Carol Boone Water District Board.
Second.
Which short version do you have?
This one.
I don't have that short version. Okay.
It was kind of a last minute change.
It must have been. Okay.
Anybody else need one?
No, wait, maybe I do too. I thought I had the short version.
Yeah, that's the long one, we want short.
Oh, the short version, okay.
You can have this, and then I got done with it. All right, Mr. McClung?
Yes. If, if Mr. Bland's in a position to get up, I know he doesn't, he's on, he's on the Carole Boone Water Board, and he may not be in a position to be a spokesman. However, I'd like to ask him, because he is on that board, just what is the status of-
He's not listening. He's, he's talking to your attorney right now, he's not listening to that thing.
I don't care if he's listening or not.
I went to the board meeting, and I can kind of catch up.
No, I'm asking for him to do it.
Gene, can we get you to come up and tell us where Carol Boone is at?
Yes, ma'am.
We would like a, a board report from Carol Boone in regards to-
Uh, Carol Boone did not request fluoride to be added to the water.
Yeah, we know that.
Three years ago, the Arkansas Legislature voted for it. Government, Governor Huckabee, BB?
Close to the mic.
Governor BB signed the deal. We did not delay it, even though it got delayed for two years. We didn't, and it's been almost three years. It's, you know, that's beyond my pay grade to change the law.
I think what we want to know is where does the board stand right now in regards to actions taking, being taken to fluoridate and poison our water?
I would have to check with the attorney. I believe we've signed a contract to have the facilities constructed. Paid for, they're all being paid for by Delta Dental. There are no taxpayer funds or Carol Boone funds being used.
The facilities are being paid for by Delta.
That's correct.
Who is paying for, number one, the fluoride product? Number two, the tons of additional chemicals that are going to have to be bought to balance out this additional fluoride to make the water meet the water approval levels?
Yeah, can't answer that question 100%, but I'm assuming Carol Boone.
You're assuming what?
Carol Boone would pay for those.
And Carol Boone means we, the people?
Yes, ma'am.
Be forward there, Gene, come on. We, the people, are going to have to pay to poison our bodies.
Yeah, we, you, you, the people, pay for all the additives to the water currently, yes, ma'am.
Okay, this is what I dealt with at the-
You got to understand, Carol Boone cannot do anything about this.
Carol Boone is in a corner because the state legislature said, you're going to do it. We don't care if you like it or not. We don't care if your people voted against it. We don't care if it's poisoning or not. Too bad, Delta has talked us into it, and so, we're doing it. So, all we can do is hope that they can drag their feet for another five months to when we can hit the legislature. And none of them are going to sit there and say, yes, we will delay. Jim Allison would say that, but nobody else would.
I will not break the law of the state of Arkansas. You got the wrong man.
See, and, and believe me, I'm not holding that against you, Gene. But this is the problem. So, I'll, so all we can do right now is to give them this resolution, and I will continue working with an awful lot of people, tons of which are on federal levels right now of fighting fluoride nationwide. That's a plus.
Mr. McClung?
That, that was all for Gino that I had.
Thank you.
I did have another one
I have a question for Gino.
For our city attorney, and that was, what, what, what is the cost of, of filing, what, from injunction or something like that, something like this?
Well-
Or can you?
First, you'd have to determine whether it is suit that you would want to bring through the state court or whether through the federal court. And I think that's something that Ms. Snyder has been looking at, doing it on the federal level. On the federal level, you would probably be a lot more expensive if you were to foot the bill on, from a local entity. But either one, you're looking at a pretty massive amount of legal expense.
I'm just talking the front end.
Just to start it?
Just to file it.
You're talking about somebody to draft a complaint before they can draft a complaint under federal or Arkansas law, the attorney has to satisfy himself or herself that there is a likelihood that they will prevail under the laws as written or that they have a good faith basis for a change of law in order to do that. And most attorneys are probably going to charge you somewhere in the neighborhood of probably 20 to 50 hours of due diligence. And the going rate for most attorneys of the caliber that would file this suit in state court is probably in the neighborhood of $250 an hour. If you go to federal court, you're probably looking closer to $350 to $400 an hour. Your city attorney currently gets on a civil suit a much lower fee than that. But it's still a massive undertaking just to file the lawsuit to make sure that you're not hanging out there for immediate sanctions from the court. And if they bring, if your due diligence isn't there, they can bring sanctions against the body bringing the suit and the attorney.
Ms. Snyder?
Okay. At this point, I would like to say disregard what the cost or expense may be because there may be no cost or expense in regards to a lawsuit. Now, if there is a filing fee, that's different. All I can say at this point is let's not worry about the money at this point, okay? I am not able to say any more than that. But-
Point of order. Point of order.
Go ahead.
The motion by Ms. Snyder was to read and pass this resolution. We are off on a separate topic at this point.
And I'll concede to that because I'm going to add it for next meeting.
Okay.
Well, I had a question for Mr. Bland. Is that pertinent to this? Okay.
Time's up.
Say it, he?
Okay, you're on the board. So, would this, the cost of this, all the stuff that we have to pay for, we, the people, does that indicate to you that there would probably be a tax increase of some sort to cover this? Because the money is not there.
Uh, probably not, Ms. Eller. The cost is going to be somewhere around 15,000, don't hold me to this, but about 15,000 a year. You know, we sell billions of gallons of water. Eureka Springs is the smallest user. Eureka Springs uses about 10% of the water we produce.
Okay.
So, the actual cost probably wouldn't be that much. We got some expansion programs. We've done our 20-year study, and Harrison, the other cities are using water. Eureka Springs is actually reducing its water use, so. I don't know if that answers your question, but there will be some rate increases, but it will be from expansion blinds and things like that.
Okay, now, I'm just trying to get a, a picture of what the impact on the citizens of Eureka Springs would be besides having the stuff in the water.
Several billion gallons of water would be 10%.
Is that the fluoride or the fluoride and the additional chemicals?
I'm sorry?
Was that a price on the fluoride only or the fluoride and additional chemicals?
That's the price that was given to me by the engineer is, I remember it.
For?
Nicky may remember it better, he's been-
For which? Was it fluoride price only or?
Whatever I tell you would not be correct. I, I mean, I didn't come prepared for that. I, I came prepared for the hospital.
See what happens?
Hopefully, so. But you're, anybody's welcome to Carol Boone's meetings and-
My understanding was that was the cost of the fluoride only, not the additional chemicals.
I can't, I can't really answer that truthfully, sorry.
We stay up with motion and second on the floor to deal with-
To approve the resolution number.
Number and-
To assign a number?
Was it to approve also?
Well, reading is approval.
If that's what, do you want it?
I want it numbered in red.
Approved as read?
Yes, you do.
Numbered in red, so it's approved.
Well-
For approval.
Sometimes, I mean, you have the option. Okay, we're not discussing it or reading it for approval, so I'm asking you-
Let's read for approval.
Thank you.
Already discussed.
It could be voice.
Okay, all, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, stand by. Board number.
Uh, it will be resolution number 644. A resolution in opposition to the mandated fluoridation of the Eureka Springs city water supply, whereas the people of Eureka Springs have consistently voted against fluoridation of their water supply and whereas a constructive notice was given to the board and personnel of the Carol Boone Water District and to other pertinent people related to this water issue on May 23, 2012. We, the people of the city of Eureka Springs, do hereby remind the Carol Boone Board and personnel and other related pertinent personnel of all the, of all the laws that must be followed, even if in opposition to the singular law passed by the state legislature in March 2011 in regards to fluoridation of local waters. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council in the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that the city council does not support the fluoridation of the Eureka Springs water supply.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, brings us to number four, discussion of yard waste. Looking to discuss?
I forgot to delay that one to the next meeting.
I'll second deleting it.
Delete or postpone?
No, postpone.
Postpone.
There's a difference.
Yeah, I almost got it deleted.
Is there a second, Mr. Mitchell, do you second?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Moves us to number five, decision, extension of water lines to Miles Mountain.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor is open? Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, could we ask our director of finance to help us with a little bit of some accounting stuff here? I think we got-
Lonnie, if you'll, you'll come up to the mic, please.
Please, sir.
Okay. It's apparent we've had a round of the crew go through city hall, so hands, hands, recipe, and he is too, so stand by.
Oh, you're exposing us, thank you.
No, I think it's best to contamination point.
Oh, it's all done.
No, see, this is what you-
We met the other day with a whole lot of people and some bond people and everything, and surprisingly, the number from the engineers came in relatively reasonable considering what we had estimated. But, and they had talked about some bond issues or so. And then we have a memo here somewhere that talks about that. So, would you update us on, and I guess the bottom line question would be, if we did the bond issue, added what was on that memo, can we afford to make those payments?
Well, excuse me. I received today a proposal from Mr. Dennis Hunt.
Yes, sir.
Who was, is with Stevens. And I don't know who all got this, but he, he, and I have not had an opportunity to discuss this with him because he's, was tied up whenever I got back with him. But what he's proposing, and he states that this is very preliminary numbers. And so, the, these are the assumptions that he, he used in computing this, and that would be refunding the outstanding 2008 and 2010 water and sewer revenue bond issues and adding, and extending the, the date. And the settlement date of the bonds would be December 1st, 2015. And the, the timeframe would be extended to, for payment of those would be 20 years to December 1st, 2035. It would include, excuse me, a million 500,000 for the proposed expansion or extension of the sewer. The interest rate would, the net interest rate would be approximately 3.38%. The city's water and sewer department at the time of the offering would have revenues available for debt service of at least $321,000 or 1.25 times the coverage. And the department's 2011 audit indicates that there was a debt service available of 306,000. The, a 2014 audit and a nine-month statement ending September 30th, 2015 would be prepared and available for the offering. And so, with that, And so, with that, the bond total would be $3,760,000 at par. Transfers from the prior issues of the reserve funds would be $179,305, and there would be original issued discount on the bonds of 16,000. So you'd have a total of money coming in of $3,922,679.05.
Three million, how much?
The use of the funds at that time would be to pay off the existing 2008 and 2010 issues. That would take $2,195,000 of the funds. The million 500,000 for the project funds would be set aside. There would be a debt service reserve fund established of 129,543,13. The underwriters' fee would be $56,400. Cost of issuance, which is printing and probably some attorney fees, would be 40,000. And then they have some miscellaneous of $1,735.92, and that, that's the total uses of the funds of $3,922,679.05. This is just a schedule of the pricing summary on the bonds, when they would be sold, and the maturity value, and the dollar amount, which I won't go through the whole issue, but at any rate, and then the debt service schedule. And we've started out in 2016, principal and interest, principal would be $150,000, interest would be $109,086.26, for a total of 259,086.26 for 2016, and it would go on down, and there would be a decrease slightly in '17, be back up to 258,086.26, and '18, down to 254, back up, and so on and so forth. The total cost at the end would be 5,137,385.14, would be the total payout over the 20-year period.
So, the hospital has, they can get an extension from Centers for Medicare/Medicaid Research past the April 16 date, should construction still be under progress. The gentleman from the bond issue said something about, we probably wouldn't be working on those until the fall of '15, and some of those bonds would possibly be taxable because of the nonprofit status of the hospital. And then some would, would not be taxable because of the water line going out servicing citizens on that side of town.